Amen. Item one B is a roll call. Uh, Ms. Lisa is not present at the moment. We're hoping that she can make it here in just a few. Item one C is the reading of board team commitments. Do any of you have that in front of you maybe?
I've got it pulled up.
Okay, Matt, do you care to read that for us, please?
To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockaster County Schools commits to: Review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements, continuously define and work toward long-term goals that serve all students of the district, make each decision based on facts and the best for all students, work together, support each other and not surprise one another, listen to each other and speak freely, discuss board deliberations to point a mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information, support the majority's decision projecting board unity toward shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning, operate without personal or political agendas, respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully, delegate implementation to superintendent and education team, and respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Thank you, man. Item two is to adopt the agenda. Uh, Dr. Ballinger, was there anything that you know that we need to change?
No, there's no changes.
Okay, with that being said, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Now for the fun part of the night. Item three is our school and our community showcase. And item A is Mr. Nick Williams with Broadhead Elementary.
Thank you all for having us tonight. Glad to be here, excited to be here. Uh, with me tonight, I brought, uh, Ms. Gina Bustle and several of our students at Broadhead Elementary. Um, um, brought Ms. Gina this year because Dr. Ballinger knows for a couple of years, like, on my wish list for the school as our, um, as our enrollment's grown and Dr. Ballinger asking about needs and stuff. One of my biggest wish lists was to try and get an art class. And so we've finally been able to get an art class, and whenever we was able to do that, the first thing that come to my mind is Ms. Gina Bustle's. Uh, she's incredibly passionate and talented, uh, with art, and she's done a fantastic job, and our kids absolutely love it. So I asked her if she would come and bring some students tonight and let them present some of their stuff. So I'll turn over to you, Ms. Gina.
Thank you all for letting me be here. I've been so excited about teaching art at Broadhead and bringing that to the students there. And I want to say Happy Veterans Day if anybody's a veteran or has veterans in your family because they're real stars of the show today. Um, but I just wanted to, um, thank you all for your support of our students, of our teachers, of our families. I think our district really does a good job supporting everybody in our community to make sure that our kids are successful, and we really appreciate that. Sometimes all the little things, um, people behind the scenes do go unnoticed, but I know everybody's working hard to, to make sure that our school system thrives and our community thrives. So, anyway, I wanted to, um, talk today a little bit about arts at Broadhead. I think that arts encourages creativity, imagination, a lot of those things that we really need to support in our children. I believe that every child is gifted, and it's our job as teachers, parents, adults, to help them find those gifts, and so it's been really fun to kind of nurture and see the gifts that the kids have learned through art. Um, art gives us the ability to be creative, to think about possibilities that maybe we didn't consider, or think about things in a different way from a different perspective. And I always tell my students, you guys know this, that you make lots of mistakes in art. We have, like, forty-five minutes of time, and so if you make a mistake, you don't have time to start over. You have to make it into something that's gonna work. You have to figure out how to fix it, and I think that's an important lesson in life for kids. I always tell my kids, even when I taught first grade, a story about an old man. He, he saw this moth in this cocoon, and it was struggling to get out, and so he wanted to help the moth, and he kind of peeled back the first layer, and the moth came out, but it didn't fly. And that's because the man helped it. He didn't allow the moth to struggle. He didn't allow it to build itself up and encourage that strength. And sometimes it's easy to step in for students and fix things, but it's better to let them learn and develop those strategies on their own. So I really like for them to learn that through their art, and I think that they have this year. Um, some of our greatest creators, inventors, and innovators, somebody planted a seed of curiosity within them. And I think that's really important today to foster in our youth because I think that we all have gifts, and it, and sometimes kids never realize what their gifts are until somebody plants that seed. And when you give a child an opportunity to draw, it's not just a picture, it's possibilities. So I'm gonna let my fifth grader share first some of the pieces that they've worked on this year.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Mahaffey, and what I like best about art is that we've never had it before, so every time I go, I get to learn, like, new things and stuff. So, um, I'm gonna show you guys some of my pieces. This is a, a recent piece we have made, and it's a scarecrow. And, um, it's, we worked on using primary colors to create secondary and the shadow of a scarecrow. And it was fun because we got to use blur colors, and that's probably my favorite, like, thing to use in art. And this is the one we're working on right now. It is working on, uh, perspective, and it's, we're gonna draw a float in later from, like, a Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, and we watched a video on that and stuff. It's really cool. And then this one is negative space, and so we, um, filled in the background with different colors and shapes to make it look very colorful and stuff. And this was our first one we did this year. This is the owl we used oil pastels, and it was the first time I'd ever used this type of thing, and we blended it, and it was really cool. So that's probably my favorite one, but...
My name is Kason Williams, and I'm in fifth grade. And this is some art pieces I have. This is one we did. We basically learned about, like, using negative space shapes and, um, objects. So, yeah, that's one of them. This one is an owl. We used pastels to, like, go into end with our fingers and stuff, and I really enjoyed this one. It's probably my favorite one. This is a scarecrow. Um, we used primary colors to make secondary and, like, blend them in to make, like, a cool background. This one, we had to pick two characters to use as, like, an American Gothic thing. And, yeah, this one was fun, too. This is the recent one we're working on. It's, like, one point perspective, and I'm, I'm gonna put a quote in the middle.
Hey, my name is Cody Smith, and one thing I like about art is that we've never had it before, and it's pretty fun to learn new stuff. And, um, this art, we were learning about negative space, and it was pretty fun. And then we did the scarecrow, and we learned about blending these things, and I'm mixing primary colors. It's to correct secondary colors. And then this one, we were learning about the American Gothic, and we did pick two, uh, characters.
My name's Ryan Mulling, and my favorite thing about having art at Broadhead is we get to do things that we've never done before. Our pieces are a scarecrow. We did, um, use paint and blended the colors together, and used, um, little brushes to make the texture at the bottom. And we did an American Gothic, a cherry, and we, um, picked two characters, and they flash around, and they're middle ground and...
My name is Natalie Kate, and one thing I like about art is that we never had it before, and I've always loved art since I was a little kid. So this first one we did, we used pastel colors, which you get to blend with your finger, and this is one of my favorite ones because it's just very bright and colorful. And then this next one, we learned about, uh, negative space, and we, we got to use a lot of, like, neon colors and, uh, make it, like, 3D and, and that was, that's what I like about art.
Great job.
My name is Egan.
My name is Lee.
My name is Max Lee. One thing that I like about art is there's no wrong, right, or not answer. I like because, like, in a math problem, there was a right or wrong answer, but in art, there is no right or wrong answer. So here's one of my drawings that I did. I like this one because I picked spring theme, and that's what I like. We picked that to do because we did something that we wanted to do, and this one was really creative.
And then I also like this one. It was dot day, and, uh, I did a flower, and then we did dots around the circle, and then we added some detail in the background. So for my tree, I did a holiday theme. And I like this tree because I love holidays, and I also love rainbows and butterflies and birds, so I put that on my tree. And I did this one, and we ripped pieces of paper up, and we colored it yellow, and we painted green leaves and stuff, and I put hearts around mine. And my name is Lee Harper, and thank you.
So my favorite pieces in art is my tree. I made a Halloween theme because I love fall and I love dressing up. And another one I did was my sunflower. I liked the middle part. It's called the Vinci Circle, which was meant after the artist. I picked some of my favorite colors out. And I did my apple, and that's like a purple background, and we did many colors and designs and patterns. My favorite pattern I did on it was this one. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley. And, um, today, um, I'm gonna show you about my, um, sunflower sheet. We did a sunflower, and we did a dot because we read this book about the dot, and there's this kid who didn't really know what, he didn't know what, he really didn't know how to draw, but he did a dot, and then he was, he was in the art show, and then he did that. My next one, I did my tree of mine, and I did dogs because I love dogs, and that's the thing I love. And I did an apple. We did different patterns, and I loved this one. I loved all the squirrels and all the zigzags. And, um, I like this one, too, because I just like my favorite colors, and that's all my favorite colors, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lacy. And this is my tree of mine. I did that forever because it's gonna, it was close to Halloween. And this is my flower. It has all my colors, and my favorite color is red. And here is a apple, and it had all, well, had a...
My name is Levi, and my favorite thing about art is I never did, we never had it at school before, and I like to do what I have. And this is my tree of mine. I did, we did controllers, and because I like to play Minecraft. This is my flower, and my favorite thing about it is the colors, and I'm all my favorite colors.
We have two more.
My name is Fergie. My favorite thing to do in art is back that texture we done. This is the, we're gonna be done. This, this one, texture one. We learned about... This is the tigers. We learned a, a, a lot of different tigers. This is the face. Thank you.
Good job. Wow. Here's her pop art piece with her cityscape. And what did you get to do on the dipper building? That's pretty. She made the snow with a toothbrush and the fur of the owls, since we were learning about... What? Next turn? Good job. Thank you, Doc. Mr. Nick, there's a little competition. Y'all have got it so far.
Uh, but I, I do want to say to the board, to Dr. Ballinger, thank you so much for, uh, for your support in making an art class at Broadhead possible. It would, um, you know, that, that, I'm not an artistic person. I enjoy art. I'm not good at it at all. Uh, but I recognize the importance of that, and, you know, the analytical side of your brain. You got the creative side, and kids tapping into both sides. I think there is some power, eh, power in that, uh, like Ms. Gina said. And you would not shock you how many kids I have when I walk the halls that were like, "Mr. Nick, can you please get us an art class?" And I would tell them, I'm like, "It's on my list. It's opportunities there." So thank you, Dr. Ballinger, for working with me to make that, uh, a reality for our kids. I greatly appreciate it. Ms. Gina, I gave her, I literally gave her a, a blank, uh, slate and tried to do, like, JD and say, "Just let me know how much money you need." And, uh, she, she's just, she's ran, she's ran with, she's ran with it and done a great job, so thank you.
Our classes cost me a fortune.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm always like... All right, I'll dive into my stuff really quick here. Brandon, can I just click the arrows that go through, or do you gotta switch it?
We'll have to click it.
Okay, all right, you can go through here. You can go up to the next thing. Um, so I can't tonight because our KSA results are not, are not released until next week, so unfortunately, I can't present any, uh, any of that with this being a public meeting. But what I will focus on is our, um, our spring I-Ready data and update you all on where we finished, um, last year at the, at the end of the school year, which in my experiences and my, this being my fourth year at Broadhead, is very, is very comparable. It's, it's a very accurate indicator, uh, of where we fi, where we finished the year at. Brandon, you click ahead. Uh, so this, this year, going back to twenty twenty-one, uh, coming right out, coming right out of COVID, this is our reading proficiency growth that you can see, uh, that's been outlined. So you can see that, you know, up to this point, we've had exponential growth every year. Um, and I know that's kind of small, but from over the last four years, we've seen a twenty-two, uh, almost twenty-three percent increase in student proficiency in reading, um, on, on there. So I'm real, really, uh, really proud of our students, um, with, with that there. Uh, we, I mean, we've got virtually, uh, and even in our, even in our, like, third, fourth, and fifth grades, uh, our testing grades, that number's above seventy percent on there, when you just factor in those grades. So that shows that, you know, kids are chipping away at it year in and year out. Uh, and then for math, it kind of, kind of the same story. You can see coming out of COVID there, and we're all worried, how many years is it gonna take, you know, to not just get back to where we are, but then push forward even farther, um, on where, on where we've been able to get there, being able to see some exponential, uh, growth. So right, you know, right now, we're blessed. I hope, you know, be at a point, and maybe next year, when I, I come back to you, uh, come back to you. Hopefully, I'm presenting, you know, might be seventy-two percent. It might not look like as big of a growth, but that's fine. We're, we're just chipping away at every, every, you know, one kid at a time, trying to help as many kids as we can get, get on a grade level there. But over the last four years, almost a forty percent increase in our math, uh, our math proficiency at, at Broadhead. Um, Brandon, you skip ahead, ahead with this one. So one question I, I get asked, uh, where we have had growth, um, we've had some visitors, other principals, I've gotten to know, reach out, ask if they can send some teachers to observe our teachers, and the first question they always ask me is, "What program are you using?" And what I would say, it's not programs, it's people, and the power of human connection. Uh, and adults being able to collaborate with one another, holding, holding themselves and each other to a high standard, starting with myself, uh, and then, then transferring that mindset and that belief into a young kid. As you all know, the elementary school kid will run through a wall for a sucker. It's not hard to motivate. Uh, so if you transit, if you transfer that accountability to that kid and you bring them along, um, in, in that process with you, some special things can happen. Um, so the first thing, and, you know, I try to think, and when I answer that, you know, what are some things that, that have led, led to that? And there is no magic bullet. There's no program that can just lead to that. If so, I would not be here. I would not need to exist in my role, uh, at Rocka, I mean, uh, and I, hopefully, we don't ever come to a day of that with modern technology, but I would not need to be here. Uh, but the first thing is a strong tiger culture, and that's been, those of you who aren't on Broadhead know, that's been established at that school for decades. Uh, I, I just want, I wanted to come in and be a part of that. I did not have to establish that, uh, but our culture is just really good. Not in the sense of everybody just being happy and smiling and all the feels, but people of, of, you're a Broadhead Tiger. That means something. Hold yourself to a high standard because you can do great things in all various phases. So it, it's a, it's a mindset. Uh, the next thing behind that is high-quality staff. I've been very blessed. I have absolutely, uh, tremendous staff. Uh, my veteran, my veteran staff, uh, that I've had there have been phenomenal of, of, you know, when I came in to, you know, working with me. Uh, and, and even though that, you know, some of them, I might have been their fourth or fifth principal, you know, and they've had several changes, working with me. Uh, my veterans have been great, and then we've had a ton of turnover, like all the other schools in the district with retirees and stuff. We've been blessed to have, to be able to recruit really good teachers to come join, uh, Broadhead, um, because, because they want to be a part of, and we've been able to retain those teachers. Um, so having high-quality staff, and then they also, they, they are committed to professional growth. Uh, our district does a lot, uh, with clarity work, uh, focusing on the standards, and we have a lot of district PDs that we, that we do. UFLI, those types of things have been great, but they also do a lot of stuff on their own. Uh, ton, with KEDC, uh, and, and they seek it out on their own because they want to be the best version of themselves they can, they can be. Um, and then the other, the next thing, the third one, is standards focused instruction. We never, we do not talk anymore in terms of what unit are we teaching, what topic are we teaching? We talk about what is the standard, what is outlined in that standard, and the knowledge and skills that the kids are expected to know. Outside, once you figure that out, there's tons of activity, there's thousands of activities you can do, all kind, oh, there's all kinds of ways that you can do. Um, so, uh, we, we focus solely on standard, standards-based instruction and what skill, and finding, and, and using, whether it's in our HQIRs or supplementing with other resources, uh, to teach the standard at the level that, that is, it is expected to tall that on there. So, uh, standards fo, you focus instruction has been really big. Uh, the other thing is our da, data-driven analysis. We don't just, like, look at numbers just to see where we're at so we can create graphs, or I present to you all, we use our data to determine what are our stu, our school and student strengths, and what are our school areas for growth and student areas for growth, and then we make our instructional decisions bas, based on that. And teachers will, uh, develop small groups within their classes, um, at where they can more, uh, independently target kids' skills through their small group rotations and meet students where they're at, uh, to push, to push them for, uh, push them forward. So, uh, we, we are a very data-driven school. I know when people hear that sometimes, you know, the thing is that turning a kid into a number, testing them to death, that's, that's not what I mean in that sense. We do, we use student achievement to make sound decisions about how we can move them, how we can move them forward. And then the last thing is, um, community, community support. I do, um, the amount of support that we have around, uh, Broadhead is, is tremendous. And I don't mean, and, and, you know, dollar signs with fundraising, I mean just the amount of pride that goes into that school. If, if it was, if we were struggling, I would hear it from them before I heard it from Dr. Ballinger, guaranteed. Guaranteed, because there's a tremendous amount of pride in that school that people feel. I, I mean, we have, for our alumni banquet, we have people come in that graduated nineteen fifties, and they come, and they tell me stories from, and, and I love those conversations. Um, and I can tell you that's been instilled with me and will go with me for, uh, the rest of, the rest of my life, for sure. Uh, so community support, and then, uh, the next thing is our, our commitment. Um, you know, we've been blessed. I have a lot of growth, and what my conversation with my teachers this year to start the year is getting a lot of growth or success can also be a trap, uh, that you can get to feeling good about yourself, patting yourself on the back, and it's good to take time to be proud and understand the process that got you there. Uh, but it's also, of what I've said is, we can't get complacent. We gotta stay humble. We gotta stay, uh, a, and stay focused on what got us here. And we really do, I feel, I feel very confident that we have the systems in place with our PLCs that we have and the structures that we have in place to where if the state changes standards in a couple of years, we have the structures in place that we can get our hands on, and we're ready to go. We're ready to go. We're not gonna be falling behind three years and, you know, falling back down, then working our way back up. That we should just be re, ready to go on there. So, uh, we, we are committed to, um, providing a strong... That we should just be ready to go on there. So, we, we are committed to providing as strong of foundations we can for our students to prepare them for Rockhills County Middle School, life, and then for our community. I mean, let's, let's be honest. There's a lot of talk in our community about development in our schools. It's really dang on important for Broadhead Elementary to be, to be successful. That way, people not only want to come work here, they want to reside here and for economic development and all that. So, it's very important, not just for Broadhead Elementary, but Rockhills County Schools to be successful. So, that, that's our commitment to the community and we greatly appreciate everybody's support.
Mr. Nick, I just wanted to say, you know, bringing those children in here was exactly what I needed today. You know, seeing their little faces was just a reminder of, of why I do what I do. And so, thank you for that because I truly needed, I think, me and Dr. Ballinger both said, you know, we both needed that today. But I just want to say, your leadership at that school is second to none. I mean, you've done a phenomenal job and you are right about your staff. I see they have an excitement about them that, I don't think we find that in every school. So, you know, kudos, kudos to them. But your children, they're family, you know, it's obvious that you have a culture there that we need, we need everywhere. And, but, you know, you know, I know you are quick, you're like Dr. Ballinger, quick to point out how wonderful your staff is. But it takes a very good leader, to, to have a good staff. So, you know, and I appreciate you and you.
Please, please bring more children, children. Please, please, please.
Don't ever come back.
I want, I want, I know, I know, that's the story of the show.
Thank you. And to Ms. Gina, is she still with you? No, she stepped out. Uh, that wrong, that wrong, what she's done, making the children, voices, voices about art, art. And just having that appreciation, you know, appreciation of the arts, something that will follow that way, high school. We just, we just, it goes, it goes around, around, and I think that, I think she's done a job. I can tell that she knows about it. So, I'm so glad, I'm so glad you have a heart. There were a barrel, there were a barrel of expectations. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Famous, famous.
Somebody, somebody asked, what are you going to do, what are you actually going to do? I guess I was getting, I guess I was getting. I don't know. I don't know. And I, I did one thing, I did one thing, I wanted to say one thing else real quick. I know I can't, I know I can't present on our KSA data, but our social studies, our science, our science teachers and my writing teachers are, are a tremendous part of our school's success. And I wish, I wish, what I would say about those subjects is the majority in science, over fifty percent of our students are on grade level. Social studies and writing, we have almost ninety percent on grade level with those subjects. And, and, and all subjects right now, when students leave fifth grade at Broadhead Elementary. Eighty-five to ninety-five percent of the kids are on grade level. So, I do want to, I do want to make sure, I shout out those teachers, I can't present the specific numbers on their subject. So, thank you all so much.
Before you, before you, before you leave, I didn't want to say much. I appreciate you and I know this whole team and the board just appreciates the work, the team of Broadhead. It's a special place and I know that you captured this tonight in, through the student performance as well as the data. But if you've not, if you've not, if you've not had an opportunity to go down to Broadhead and just take a tour, walk in, you feel that it's in the building. And, and that's just something to be amended and obviously, your test scores show that, but it's more than just a test score. And I know that, you know, that you have these conversations. Test score is something that we look at, when you look at the children, those are kids that exit fifth grade and they can read on grade level and they can do math on grade level, which means, which means lifetime success. I mean, research shows if you are leaving elementary school proficient, you're going to continue along that course of proficiency and we're changing lives, we're changing lives at Broadhead. So, kudos to all of your staff.
Thank you. Thank you all. We really appreciate your support.
How many years have you been the president of Broadhead?
This is my, this is my fourth year.
Fourth year.
Yes, my, yes, my.
Were we sure, glad you're there?
Thank you for letting me say that. Thank you. Thank you all. Have you, have you?
Beat that. The next thing on our agenda tonight is the construction update from Cudel Construction. So, have at it. Beat that.
You could change the agenda. All right. I think everything's going well. We've had a lot of weather. As soon as we got the bottom ready to put up all these walls, we had rain for a week and now we have squal. So, this time we have a little overhead shots. So, this is your footprint, really, of the school. So, that's the whole wing on this bottom section. See where the bridge is going to go across the top wing. So. It's what's, it's what's. Yeah, that's, that's, that's also, that's also passed. That's going to show, keep going, keep going. That is, that is like the kitchen, okay, area. So, that's up in your top. Down to that, and that's just your school, from the bulk of the school on the backside. That's your road that runs to the middle of it. I just did, I just did a few shots of different guys. So, this is what's going on in your mechanical room, outside of the gym. You'll see there's just, that's where the stage was. And there, that's where everyone says there's so much, there's so much. That's that room with all that stuff in it. So. Plumbing is going down, the basement, basement. And, and, and just some ductwork. So, just showing on behind the scenes. Now, we're kind of, now, we're kind of in this phase where, and even today, when it's raining. They're, 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 they're running bricks, they are still there, working. Is that it? Is that it? That's it.
It's a timeline.
Yeah, I just, I just, I put that in timeline. Just had, just had, just had the dates. It made it a lot easier to look at.
We'll print this off, we'll print this off.
So, I, I.
We'll print this for you all because that's really hard to see.
Yeah, and, yeah, so, just kind of, just kind of in general terms. Courtyard should be done about, beginning of December, the basement, the basement. I'm looking for the beginning of the year. And what I mean, and what I mean that being finished, it's still that we've gone to the next phase, which is the top. So, in other words, all walls, all walls will be up. We're not going to have it finished. We have to have a roof. So, kind of, kind of think of it that way. The CD area, which is that top section will be like in, three, so that's in March. And then the first floor will be seven one. So, that, so that, so seven one is really my thing of finishing that. Okay, okay. And then, and then we're going to try our best to do a little bit with the C and transfers to the school. So, maybe we can kind of get out of the kitchen, tear that down, just get that little entryway done. Um, we're going to try to do that as they're, as they're down, like all the rest of the stuff. So, that we can finish up that corner. It's going to be a little weird for next year if we don't kind of get that, little bit done. And then E is next, March, which is that whole front section. And then the gym will be end of next year, two years, two years. So. We're still on track. I think we're doing well. Their guys are still working through the weather and through everything. So, I think we're good. I think we're good. I don't think nothing I'm seeing right now. Main power is going to be coming in December. December. Our line should be coming in there. So, the only thing, the only thing, some may be, some may be. It's because we've got to get it all out, get it out. Everything, but everybody can tie it all in without people's last thing. Any questions?
Any questions? School, like, we'll start, we'll start the school year.
That's the point.
Almost to twenty-six.
That's the point. That's the point. It looks like we'll be able to do the kind of, kind of over the kitchen, in that kind of area first. We found where there's roof bricks and we can do that. To me, that's, to me, that's the thing. We've got to get that up and going. They're in our way. So, we get the kitchen. But it's not something we get early, too early, because there's no way to get to it. So, it's a little funky, but that's kind of the plans, they get them going. That's kind of, that's not really, it's planned in the way, it's scheduled out, but it doesn't, it's not, it's not.
And then, and that's, that's gases. We're good on that. Good on that. The main line is here.
Yeah, it's already, it's already.
Yeah, it's on, it's on. Where should we make it? That's great. Thank you, thank you so much. For the, for the, this evening, this evening, we get a, we print, we print, send, send, we'll, we'll, you can, we can, we can refer. Thank you, thank you, Daryl. That's exciting, too. That's exciting, too.
It is, it is.
You're just not, you're just not a skeeter. I'm glad he didn't hear any of that. He was walking out the door. That's probably good. He was careful. Item three C tonight is our 2025 Kimmy Destiny Award presentation. We have some guests here with us this evening to make an award presentation. And I want to welcome from Kimmy Jeff Floyd, Safety and Loss Control Manager, and Aaron Back, Claims Relations Manager. And we also have Travis Andrican here with us with Houghton's Insurance Group. So, welcome.
Well, thanks for having me. My name's Jeff Floyd and I work with Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance. And you are correct. We're here to present an award to you guys. It, I think probably a little background is, is important. We, we probably, I'm going to say around two thousand eight or nine, we wanted a way to kind of recognize the best of our best in terms of our policyholder base. We have about eighteen thousand five hundred policyholders in the state of Kentucky. And so, we, we thought of, you know, how can we do that? We obviously need to pare that down somewhat. So, we put in some, some metrics that we would use to, to come up with a list, a short list, I guess you might say. And so, we, we kind of went with overall loss ratio, which is based basically on what you pay us in premium versus what we pay out for injuries and so forth. And we set that number at forty-five percent. That's, that's a pretty low number. And then there's a, what in insurance speak is an experience mod. And the experience mod is kind of a, used in a calculation to come up with your premium. And that experience mod is a reflection as well of basically what you pay us in premium versus what we pay out for claims and so forth. And so, we, we set that experience mod at a, at a point eight. And that's pretty, those, those together are pretty, they're, they're tough to achieve, to be quite frank. It's not impossible, but it is, it takes effort, I guess, is, is what. So, we started about two thousand ten and, and, and doing the awards. And, and so you know a little bit about who you kind of are in, in the pool, so to speak, with. This year, we, we, there were a hundred and fifty-one school systems that were eligible to win this award. And this year, there were eight that made the list. And you guys are one of those. And so, I wanted to, to tell you in my fancy note system here, your all's loss ratio overall with us, and, and you guys have been with us for about fourteen, fourteen or fifteen years. Your overall loss ratio with us is thirty-one percent, which is outstanding. And I mentioned that your, your, the experience mod for you to qualify had to be at least a point eight. And your all's experience mod this year is a point six one, which is, I'm telling you, that's outstanding. And that tells us a lot, you know, I, there are a lot of reasons why safety is important. Obviously, the safety and health of your, your employees, your students, your staff. But there's a financial piece to that as well, you know, it obviously, and I just wanted to, in two thousand fifteen, you guys, your premium at the time was seventy-three thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars annually. This year, your premium is thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So, you've cut it in half. And a lot of the, and, and we love that, especially with schools, because budgets get tight. And this is an absolute great way to free some of that up. Again, eight schools out of a hundred and fifty-one. And, and I will congratulate or say thanks to you guys because I've, I've worked in safety over thirty years. And the one thing I know is safety, like a lot of things, is a top-down initiative. And if it means something to you, it'll filter through the ranks and, and mean something to, to those that, that you, you live and so forth. Other commonalities that I've seen with, with schools that have won this award have been, you know, a board that is supportive of safety and health initiatives, but employees that, that have been given the charge, I think, to, to take care of the safety. And Jenny and Marcus have, have been phenomenal to work with on our end. You have an agent that, that truly, truly cares about your success. Their agency has their own safety and health employees. And I, I think that's awesome. Not all of them do. And of course, I'm a safety guy. And when an agency has their own safety people, that means a lot. And then you've, you've obviously got a staff that has bought into that safety culture. Because the, the other great thing about this award, it takes everybody to win. Seventy percent of the staff can't be safety champions and the other thirty percent not really care. It doesn't work that way. The thirty percent is going to knock them out, if that makes sense. So, what you're doing has been awesome. We're very proud of the fact that we have your, your workers' compensation insurance. And, and with that, I would say congratulations. It's, it's a big achievement. It, it really is. So, I would like to, Aaron, if you want to come up here. If we could give, get a, a picture with you guys, we would love to have that.
Y'all want to step out and get a thumbnail?
That would be outstanding.
I thought that would be you, you and Jenny and Marcus, not us.
It makes their heart desire to take pictures. You just want it to work to get it here.
I don't know.
Come on, keep him all out there. During the BLP, they're going to be like, Rockhills County Learning Center. Crab water, and, and, and. They, they, they should stay on their stats. It's like, it's, I would like to. I guess, and, and his, his, um, Kathy Brown, Kathy Brown, most of us like, like his, usually, our red. Everyone liked it. Brian, Kathy's dice. Anyone? Fabulous. I guess we might be, we could have lost our ear.
Every Tuesday night, the ambulance is going out.
Always. So, somebody, someone will change. Wow.
Yes, yes. That actually is very impressive.
It is impressive.
Very impressive.
Something decreases now compared, what was it? Did he say two thousand fourteen or fifteen?
Fifteen. From two, so ten years.
Nothing ever decreases.
Especially in insurance.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Item four on our agenda tonight is our operations and actions. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Ballinger? With, if no questions, can we get a motion to approve operations and actions?
On my second.
All in favor? Item five A. Item five A is review and approve the monthly financial reports. Ms. Jenny?
We have your monthly financial reports for October. Just want to emphasize that we can, can continue to uh, monitor all funds, revenues and expenditures, and for comparison to our budget projections. Uh, for our Fund One, um, we had revenues of one point six million and expenditures of one point six million. Um, about twenty thousand dollars less in expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Jenny. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Jenny?
Property taxes will reflect, start reflecting next month.
Next month. We received our first check this week, and that will be reflected on next month's report.
Need a motion to approve our monthly financial report?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Item five B, review and approve the amended fiscal year twenty twenty-six salary schedule for the Success Coach from the Elevate Grant. Ms. Jenny, sweet.
Yes. Um, Dr. Ballinger did receive notification from KEDC that we received an increase in the allocation for our Success Coaches. Uh, we will receive three positions, and that, they made a change in the number of days that the individuals will work to um, allow for some flexibility for summer programming. And that increase has allowed us to make an adjustment to the salary schedule and increase those positions, which is, you know, an excellent um, support for the work that they will be doing in our district, and that is reflected on the salary schedule.
Have those jobs been posted yet?
Yes. Yes, however, since we are changing this tonight to be a hundred and ninety days, and we're increasing the salary, we will have to repost the job tomorrow, since the, the job parameters are changing. However, those people, um, we have plans for Ms. Savannah to reach out to the people that have already applied, and let them know these changes, and then if they want to apply for the new posting, then she'll just be able to drag that over, and they won't have to do, go through all that reapplication process.
Okay. So instead of one position, we're now gonna get three. That's wonderful.
It's great, yes.
The make news?
Elementary schools.
Um, they will be at the middle school.
Middle school.
And that's what will.
Start with the mayor and continue through high school, just like before?
Yes, it's a cohort, so it'll start with six, and Travis will graduation.
That's great.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Item five C, review and approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven board representative to serve on the district calendar committee. Mr. Repper?
So it's that time again, when uh, Mr. Daryl had the timeline up there, thinking about the school completion. Well, it's time for us to look at the calendar for next school year for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So as you all know, um, legislation sets what the membership has to be for the calendar committee, so um, I need one of you, you all, to decide who, who wants to serve on that from the board, and uh, and then we'll go on and, and begin.
Okay, uh, I personally have no desire to serve on that, so uh,
I'm happy the way it is.
Anna's been doing it.
Yeah, I'm happy with the way it is.
Do you wanna, okay.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I think that's great, Anna.
I wouldn't, I would move that it be anecdotal.
Seconding that.
All in favor? Have fun, Anna. I've had more, you know, serving on this for twenty-one years. I've had more complaints on school calendar than I've had probably had over anything else. Not lately. I'm just saying, in, in general, over the years.
Well, everyone has a, has an opinion.
Yes.
And that's why we have a committee that represents all of the different facets, parents, community members, board members, all school staff, so. And I think that's probably why the General Assembly got involved a few years ago, to change the process, so it would be a committee that's represented in, in one of the entire school community.
And I think we have a really good calendar, but.
I think people have been more happy with the calendar in the last.
Are you trying to say since you've been on that?
That's what I heard.
That's what I heard out of that conversation.
I think, yeah.
We, all ready to go? Okay. Uh, item five E, review and, oh, no, no, we need the school calendar.
We have to do, after you approve the board member that's gonna be on the calendar committee, then we have to approve.
Okay, five D, I'm sorry. Review and approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar committee.
So you can see the names that are listed there, reached out to all of those folks. They are, they are willing to serve. It is just a couple meetings. Um, and so the, the process after the board approves the committee will meet, um, at least will meet a couple times before the next board meeting, and then we'll recommend the calendar in December, and then we'll come back in, in January for the, for the approval for the recommendation. I haven't, I haven't set that date yet. I want to make sure that, that we have approval. Um, it will be before Thanksgiving, and I will try to meet some point after school between now and Thanksgiving. For the first meeting, and then we'll meet again, probably after, so that'll give the committee time to, to gather feedback.
Okay.
We're, we're good, yeah. Sorry, I was on a twenty twenty-four meeting.
I was like, no, that's not the right people. So we're good, no, we're good.
No, I was just, somebody put me in the wrong gear.
Okay.
We're good.
The twenty-five, twenty-six?
I just know that you're already disruptive, and I'm gonna call you out.
Yeah, I, I thought, oh. We're all good, all good.
Jessica Willis should be the principal that's on there, because Mr. Mr. Bustle served for several years. And uh, so he's.
He did his time.
Sorry about that.
She, she's on that, Dr. New York concede.
We're good, we got it.
Need a motion to approve the school calendar committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Item five E, review and approve the BG one project application form for the RCHS Rock Athletic Performance Conference, which is BG number twenty-six dash two-two-six. Mr. Trent?
So basically, this is the initial BG one that sets the parameters uh, for the project. Everything that, all the legwork we've done, all the discussions we've had, the initial design, it just basically puts it on paper. So, so it's telling, telling how we're gonna deliver the project, gives a description, and probably most importantly, sets a budget, that, that, for the project.
And this is the first initial step that we do?
This is the first step to getting the project started.
Yep.
The next step is we go, once this is approved, and we go back to, to Deco, the architects, and we talk about with the design, and then after they complete the design, then we bring that for approval we hope in the next December meeting. Yeah, that's, that's next. But this has to go before we can do that. And then just I do wanna note, right now, this is, the total funds available on this BG one is seven point four million, and that is based on the initial drawings that we received. However, if the project changes in scope, then that price could increase or decrease, depending on how the scope is modified, so.
But it, so if, if it should change, though, that would not put us backwards in the process of moving forward. We would just, we would just vote to change that.
We can amend it, many times as we want to.
And we can, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
We can keep amending this, alright?
Yep, you can amend the BG one as many times as you want.
Okay.
This is just the initial one that gets, gets on paper all the work that we've done, and it shows how many things we tick off. If you look down at um, the DFP, under the DFP section, it ticks off six things of our DFP. In, I don't know if we've ever had a project that, that caught that many things at once, so. So it's a lot of need that we're, we're knocking out in one swoop.
See, I'm not having questions for Mr. Quill.
And the BG one for the rock building's already done, so we're, no, we're, no.
So we, we.
Probably done by RP for architect.
Okay.
We've done some internal discussion, and, and I think I had shared with you all before, that we wanted to be really cautious that we didn't bite off more than we could chew with the middle school going on, and potentially beginning this project, and knowing that we need to put a roof on the ATC this summer. So we want to get this going forward, and then come back and start that BG one after we kind of get this ball rolling and get, get it established.
You mean you don't want Trent, you want Trent and JD to be able to sleep soon?
Yeah, I don't have to say anything. I just like to keep them around a little bit. I don't wanna.
In a perfect, in a perfect world, we would start this June one.
That's the project we hope to deliver. And I don't know if y'all read my, I got them in late, sorry about that, but in my department report, and I don't think Dr. Ballinger even knows this shit, because it just happened today. Been working with USTA on a, on a grant for the tennis courts, so that's, that's very promising. And talked a lot with them today about the timeline, and if our project timeline would meet their timeline, at least it absolutely is, so we're getting at the right spot with them too. About maybe a hundred forty thousand dollars, hopefully, so.
It's exciting.
Pretty easy money to get.
Yeah.
We'll excuse your tardiness, but I'm basically.
Love it.
Thank you, Mr. Quill. We need a motion to approve the BG one project application form that's been presented.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Item six A, review the superintendent's personnel action report.
Yes, you all can take a, give you just a moment, take a look at that and see if you have any questions. Starting to slow down just a little bit in that area. We are continuing to hire some substitutes and classifieds and certified.
So the only positions that we have posted are those success.
We have that, those positions, and then we have a middle school um, language arts teacher position posted.
And, and an MSD at Mount Vernon.
Yes, MSD at Mount Vernon, and that was Ms. Krista's, is retiring. Vernon also has a technology position, it's just a couple.
They posted today?
Yeah, we posted that today.
Alright, item seven is department reports. Anyone want to report?
When will we have test scores? Will that be by next month, or?
Um, yes, the, actually, their embargo, they released under embargo on November seventeenth, and then will be made public on November nineteenth. So on the seventeenth, we'll be able to share that out with, with you all, ahead of the public release time.
Anyone? Item eight, public comment. We do not have anyone, to my knowledge, that uh, was here, but I just would like to uh, welcome our students from the University of the Cumberland, correct? Would you all like to introduce yourselves?
My name's Connor, and I'm from here.
Um, I'm Lauren Woods, I'm from Cambridge.
I'm Ally McClure, I'm from around this area, from like the Rock Castle, Berea area.
My name is Sadie Spence, and I'm from Northern Kentucky. I'm from like, um, Covington Independence area.
Oh, welcome, and you are welcome to come anytime.
Thank you.
And you came on a good night, and got to show all of the little ones.
So much.
Uh, number nine on our agenda is superintendent communication.
Um, wanted to make certain that I, I get the opportunity before you all leave tonight to talk to you about your KSBA hour, KSBA hours, and some needs that we have, so I've got, I've got all of that to share with you before you all leave. And I did wanna provide a preschool update on where we are to, to, to our transitions with full day, and some things that we've done. We're continuing to evaluate our classroom sites at all three of our elementary schools. Our preschool teachers, I met with them, with Ms. Kayla and Ms. Casey, and we're asking them to go ahead and start designing what a full-day curriculum would look like, and what that would look like um, as far as their, what they would be doing from that early morning all the way to that afternoon time, and what that looks like. We do have new preschool curriculum that we have just purchased, and it is, does have a full-day model within it, so we already have that, and so we were really thankful that, that we have that um, at, at our disposal. We are asking our preschool teachers to go visit some, some different counties that already have full-day preschool um, established, so we're gonna take a visit to Clark County, Johnson County, and Lincoln, yes, Lincoln. So we've got the Johnson and the Clark already established, and we're working on the, a visit timeline for Lincoln County, so they can go and talk to those teachers and get some idea of how that's working, and we've been using some PRI community school funds to go ahead and start looking at um, ordering some new items for the classrooms, so we will have some stuff on hand as we try to expand. Um, and I think Kayla and Casey are working pretty closely with the Johnson County Coordinator, just to learn from her of what they're doing and, and how, what success they've seen, so we're trying to go ahead and just start jumping in and exploring in all those options of, of what that's gonna look like.
When would we anticipate making a decision on that? After?
It's a great question.
After April fifteenth, probably.
Really, yes. We're really kicking in after the first of the year.
We really won't do, be able to do anything definite until the session's over in April.
And when does the governor's plan come out for the other part of it? Has it been this month?
Um, it has already been released.
Okay.
Yes, so they had that. It was released last week.
Okay.
And I can get you a copy of that.
Okay.
So, and just some updates of things coming up. We've got a lot. It's a busy season. You all know that. Um, this, the thirteenth, this Thursday, we have the Arts and Talent Showcase at the high school. Would I like to invite anybody that is available to come? That's in the evening at six o'clock. Our culinary students have, they're gonna be cooking quite the meal. They have like a five-course meal planned. So love to have you all come visit that and, and see our arts and arts students highlighted that night, and as well as our culinary students. Ken's Kitchen is coming up Tuesday before Thanksgiving, if any of you all would like to be there to help volunteer. Um, Ms. Regina texted me today, and our central office staff is going to be there starting at four o'clock to serve, so if any of you all would like to come and jump in with us, we'd love to have you. That, and again, that's Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Um, November twenty-fourth is Rock Madness with our basketball team, so right around the corner, we'll be having basketball. And um, don't wanna leave out our middle school football team will be competing Saturday against Corbin in the state finals, so this is our.
Awesome.
Mr. Bustle, am I correct in saying that this is the first time that they've ever been to the finals, so.
It's in Lexington, it's in Lexington.
At like Corbin.
I know. At LCA?
LCA.
LCA, one o'clock.
Yep.
And then our football, our high school team will be traveling to Lawrence County Friday night for a second round playoff game, so. Lots of stuff, lots of good stuff happening right now, all over the district.
Friday is also the Safe Haven baby box opening at Rock Castle Regional.
Okay, what was the time on that?
Um, one.
One o'clock, okay.
I know this has been a really, several-year growing project for Ms. Tammy Campbell's FCC LA students, and I think they're really excited to finally get it open, and she also mentioned, I'm not sure if it's the group that they worked with to make this happen, or the lady that founded the Safe Haven baby boxes. One of the two is gonna be actually speaking to juniors and seniors during the day before they open that as well.
Is that at the site, or is it somewhere?
They're doing that at the high school. They're doing.
High school, okay.
They're doing that at the high school at ten thirty. Ms. Tammy said if anybody wants to come by, by all means, please feel free to come during that speaker. But then they'll also be at the site when they open it.
Okay.
That's a one. Matt, you have anything?
I don't think so. Happy Veterans Day. Happy first anti-aid.
Not left.
Ms. Angie?
I don't think I have anything. Um, thank you all for all you do. I love the kids. I will say just a plug for KSBA. We have our winter symposium. I don't know if any of you all want to come to that in December. And then next March, April, we have COSBA. So that's the Consortium of State School Board Associations. That's the big one. So National Conference is in Louisville. So just be thinking about that, too. That's a pretty big deal. So um, just wanted to throw that out there to everybody.
I don't think I have anything. Uh, it worries me with our first snow day. So early in the year.
Is this?
What it is to count.
Early, is this the earliest one we, it's not the earliest one we've ever had, but this feels very early.
Pretty early, though. Pretty early. Pretty early.
I don't remember a specific date or anything with it. Anytime you have it before Christmas.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're gonna be seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Kind of alarming, so. Y'all can. Have those chains ready.
The only thing I have is uh, November is the month of Thanksgiving, and uh, we have so many things to be thankful for. Uh, one thing that I'm very thankful for is uh, for the people that I serve on this board with. I think we are very blessed to have a board that cares about children, and I'm very thankful to have each of you in my lives. Uh, very thankful for our uh, our leader, who's leading the pack, that uh, it's obvious every day where your heart's at, with your children, and, and uh, all of you. Uh, you know, um, you all, you all put kids first every day. It's obvious in all of your lives, uh, outside of work. You know, you can see, you can see it on you, and I'm thankful for all of you. Uh, I would like to say that um,
Uh, I would like to say that, um, if you have not been a part of Kenneth's Kitchen in the past, young folks over there, uh, you're welcome to come. There's a lot of people in our community that, uh, that may be the only hot meal they get.
I think Ms. Regina is very worried this year about Kenneth's Kitchen.
And, and...
And where it's staying.
And, and I would like to say something about Ms. Regina. Of all the years that I've known her, she's so passionate about loving people. And, um, you know, uh, the fact that she's been willing to keep this going for so many years, uh, just, uh, it speaks volumes. Uh, I see her grandchildren down there working harder than her children. Giving you a hard time, Brandon, but I mean, uh, you know, I can remember watching Jasper and Beckham when they were very, very small, uh, in there working and doing their part at a very young age. And, you know, uh, that's something that, uh, our actions is how we teach our children. And, uh, so, and I hope Ms. Regina, if she knows nothing else, that she knows that she's appreciated by this board and by this community or what she's done and those efforts. But, uh, happy Thanksgiving, I hope all of you get to have a wonderful days off with your families, and I hope you get to cherish them and, um, and hopefully we'll have pretty weather and we won't be snowed in. And, uh, so thank you all, and nothing else, I need a motion for a change.
So moved. Yep.